So what's going on with basketball? I heard there's a lot of injuries.
Uh, yeah, a lot they've started with basketball, yeah. But, uh, yeah, I think a few kids are...
Yeah, James Schroeder ran into him and he was telling me, you know, there's a lot of head injuries and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dana, just want to come on up real quick.
Low balance alert.
Alert?
Oh, it's burning, is it good at you?
I just have a gravel question if you don't care.
Oh, sure. Yeah, come down.
Have you heard anything from Jeremy on that thirteen thousand check? He told me he was taking care of that.
No, I didn't know that he was taking care of it.
Yes.
Uh, I'll give him a call. So what do you want me to ask?
Well, I didn't, I just didn't know if you had heard from him. Couple, what's it been, a couple?
It's called a two really.
Two days ago, when he told me that he would, so...
So take care of the, uh, the...
The reimbursement for thirteen thousand to, uh...
I'll check on it. Is payroll next week?
Today.
Today.
I haven't got any these really from the state. Normally have a few by now.
Also payroll's a hundred and eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Yeah, I was looking for it.
I've been answering the phone, waiting on people this morning, and I didn't, didn't label it.
That's fine.
Do you see that Gerald on that paper? The one eleven is payroll.
Six seven, yeah.
Uh-huh.
And the second property tax bills due when?
October thirty first. Halloween.
Halloween. Trick or treat.
Yeah. One of the trees.
It's not, it's not much of a tree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
As I said, the only thing we'll need to look at in the next couple of weeks is that food line at the beginning of jail. It will probably run out by the end of this month.
And it's got thirteen thousand in there.
Six thousand here to save a lot. There's probably one that hasn't come in yet. You know, John always keeps up a month's worth of food in the freezer, so... Whatever bill we get for December will always carry over to January, so really November is the only month we're ever gonna...
Have equipment at ten sixty-six ninety-four last page. It's still pretty straight. We didn't really spend any of that.
There'll be some money coming after those cameras.
Oh, okay.
Probably take about five thousand off of that. But that bill should be five or six left by the end of year. We still got another insurance reimbursement check coming to us for that.
We can do president's, once that gets posted aboard. Thank you, Sheriff.
Good.
How's all your vehicles doing?
Good.
Diving those deer?
Had you jinxed me?
Well, you know, hope you're diving.
You don't have any, go, I got a big bill today.
Okay.
Not, not early yet.
He said he's gotta be developed today, so...
No, I'm good.
Okay, thanks, guys. Thank you. Gerald made a motion to accept the seconded. Lori's passionate on her normal bills. Dana dropped off the sheet of what the numbers were. And the sheriff, uh, gave us a copy of where the budget was for this year. All his, all his accounts. How you doing today?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing well. Gerald, you wanna let him go ahead and speak? I mean, we don't have nobody else till nine thirty, so...
I don't have anything, so...
Yeah, just concerned citizen.
Okay, I thought maybe you had...
Just, yeah, I just come in to see what it, I've never been here before or something.
Well, good deal. All right.
Sounds good, good.
What's your name?
Tom Grimes.
Tom Grimes, all right.
I know your wife.
You know Chad, Steve, my wife?
Yeah.
Do you?
Yeah, I was friends with her husband.
Okay. Her father?
Dad.
You're in jail?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Joe, might as well come on up.
Okay.
We'll knock it out. Chad, don't get, Chad already gets here at nine thirty, so...
Do I need to stay up that?
I don't know, I'm not sure why he's here, but...
No, it's okay.
Enterprise zone, I think is what I heard.
Okay.
Enterprise.
As challenging as you are, you probably don't...
Yeah, that's, that's one thing right there that's like rude to me. I don't understand what it is, but... Sort of understand tips on it, but I don't understand it very well.
Let me guess, but you stayed up only last night?
I didn't stay up to the end.
You didn't?
No.
I talked to Patrick this morning, he said he was up to two o'clock.
Really?
Two AM.
Was the game still going on?
Well, I don't know, I didn't ask him if he was in, in, in like, uh, state of shock or sad or what. He said he didn't go to bed until two.
Well, he's a clean man. Inside. Well, he's a good guy, love him.
Okay, thank you. Is it playing tonight?
Yeah, yeah. I could put it away tonight.
It's still in San Francisco. So who they going on?
Tree, trimming trees and stuff like that. Mowing.
When do you think they'll finish that mowing, at the end of October?
I'd say probably, maybe in the first week, June, November, maybe.
Part of the side of county y'all working on right now?
We're on, we're making county highways right now. We're up there on Rosebud Road. Get to Rosebud, down to Hill. And then out Unionville. And then after we get done with that, we're probably going... Immediately we'll touch up, you know, some intersections and stuff. Maybe do a pass on, on oil chip if it's long enough to, the part of the county won't be long enough. The, the part of the county that we did first, you know, earlier on this summer, might be long enough to do another pass or something.
Uh, but that, yeah.
Same thing, tractors are really giving us fits this year. Just radiator blew up on one the other day and... I guess just different things all the time, just making changes. One of our, I mean, our best grader is down too, you know. If they get repaired, that's not gonna be a cheap repair on any of them.
Well, that's it.
Something about the main bearings between the engine and the transmission is out. Seal's out, the bearings are out, so it's leaking, basically it's leaking engine oil into the transmission.
Could you go on your computer, we've got lots of people on the board.
Help for structure, who's that?
That's the, that's the object out of Indianapolis. They, that truck that we bought from the sheriff's department. International, the truck that we bought from the sheriff's department. I told you we'd have to put a lot of money into it to make it usable for us. That's what that is. We had to rip that old service bed off of it that came with it, and we had to put a dump bed on it. And get hydraulic foot on it, and get an old flat put on it, and that's what that cost is.
Yeah, we knew that was gonna be pretty steep.
It's twenty to thirty thousand.
Yeah, but I mean, we got a, a good truck for, lasts for many years.
Absolutely.
Yeah. If we had to buy something like that, sure, what could that be?
Could've done it for twenty-three, you know, and money in the sheriff's department.
Should have picked those signs up from, yeah, we hear.
Just got them this morning.
Did you put them in the truck? Okay. Was it about twenty-five or thirty of them?
Uh, it was a pretty heavy stack. I was winded carrying them to the truck, so... Yeah, it was pretty, pretty good stack.
Yeah. Do you have the, uh, the things to put on top of the signs? Or do you need to order any of that stuff?
We ordered some.
Okay.
Um, I never did get any from, from Jazz or anybody. I don't know if he has any yet, or, I don't know, but we ordered some, and we, we got some.
Okay, so you got everything you need?
Yeah, that's good. My last time, I'll just keep track of it and provide you all of this.
Yeah, we'll reimburse it.
Letter as to what we put up.
Yeah.
I kinda believe somebody would keep a list of the intersection, specific intersections they want them at. Because nobody does that, I mean, they, it's the road sign, the main sign, and nobody can say Comer Road. If I got a sign that says Comer Road, I gotta drive from one end to Comer to the other to find where it's supposed to go.
Right.
Then I may not have it where it's, somebody wanted it.
Yeah.
Maybe it's be where the ones missing.
Yeah, that's right.
So, it's, uh, not a huge deal, but it's, you know...
Time to spend.
It takes a little time, yeah.
Gerald's getting his list there for you, I think.
I better get my pad of paper out here.
I called him another day, but, actually, I don't think he wants to call me back.
Oh, you didn't want to call him? Well, he's probably out there mowing PK, PK, was he, he's out there weeding, PK.
We went out there, by the way, and I, Max said it just really wasn't hardly long enough to go out there to mow.
Well, Jim Miles, he's one that asked about, and I'll find out, I haven't been out there yet, but...
Is that next, this coming weekend, or was it last?
Last week told me, and I can't remember. I don't want to expect a lot of out of town people or... Or, you know, one of them to get the thing up like that.
Hey.
Hey.
I'm not on there anymore.
Yeah, you are, in at thirty. Oh, okay, it's about five minutes.
Okay.
I didn't see. All right, cool. Gerald, you gonna make for Joe?
Well, believe it or not, no.
You're kidding me.
I might start calling around, not for, on Monday night. See what, dig out.
I, I liked it, didn't call you back last time, did I, or?
Oh, you did next day, wasn't it?
Yeah, the next day.
That's good. I don't, you know, as we discussed, I don't know. You met, uh, Morris Knox?
Uh, I don't really know him, you mean the man from buying this, this ex-plant and stuff? Yeah.
I think he's been up there longer. Or before.
Okay.
So, the reason I say that, he came up there the day we was working. Putting that landing down there where we get to that. And he didn't say what he wanted, he just talked to, yeah, I was helping him. And then, um, Tom kept telling me that he was looking to put that on there.
Yeah, I asked...
Said he'd done something before.
I asked people about the reach on that boom, and he said, ten feet, he really was pushing it. I keep, I don't know if it stretched out that far, especially, the boom may actually stretch out that far, but you may not be able to put the weight out there.
Well, I checked, it's sixteen feet.
That's what it needs to be.
And that'd be, then, you know, you've got an outstabilizer, I think it comes out. But if, if, it would be down on the bank. But it'd be bad. I don't even know if it'd go that deep for months, so... I don't think, and if Morris, I mean, he's got his own, what he could risk over there, he's got some basic equipment, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, and I hold his in the, but he, Tom kept saying that he was looking at it.
I'll say, if somebody, uh, if somebody, this is not my business, if somebody recommends the type of gate to then to get it. I know that that's...
It's laying up there.
A normal flat gate like that? Where, you know, you know as well as I do, you're talking about on the riverside, there's tons of debris and wood and stuff to float by there and that. That is constantly gonna be a problem for them to get that gate closed.
Well, that's what's the matter with it. See, they'd always wait for that water to back up in there. And you couldn't see the bottom of it, in fact, the gate would almost be underwater. And then they'd take that, about a twenty to one gearbox, and track that thing down. And then have a chunk in there, and they had it, they just kept pushing, pushing, finally it just broke loose from the side. So, they did the, of course, you know, this one, it, it operates on its own, I mean, something could get in there.
That's what I mean, yeah, there's gonna be...
You'd have to play it out, yeah.
You gotta keep that spotless sort of actual seal.
I know.
Seal at all, I mean, it'll let tons of water back in.
I know. See, that's what they're doing with, see, with it broke loose with them sandbags there. Uh, their pumps has been able to keep it out of Brookport. I think they got two twelve inch pump, electric pumps up there. But, I mean, if they couldn't, there's nothing they could do, but, you know, I guess the state's giving pumps, the following, you know, base of funds.
Yeah. Thank you, Joe.
All right, thank God.
Joe? Survived my trip.
How do you like that area, buddy?
That's a nice area. Uh, growing, and, um, one oh fifty-seven, cut across the area. That's why I'm here today. Okay. Um, I'm going to, currently, my, one of the things I'm doing is I'm going to all of the, um, taxing districts, um, that are associated with Village Joppa, City Metropolis, Brookport, and Massac County. And asking for resolutions to be signed that grants Juanita the authority to abate property taxes when a project is done in one of these particular areas. Um, today I'm here because the county commissioners is the governing board over the highway district. So if someone was to do a, uh, project, the highway district has, uh, is a taxing, you know, a body, and they sign and want that abatement resolution, um, this would give Juanita the authority to, uh, grant them that incentive. It's one of our local incentives, uh, school districts, hospital, um, uh, the sanitary district, city metropolis. Uh, the, the applicants themselves will sign what's called an intergovernmental agreement. So I'll be coming back here probably the next week or week after with the intergovernmental agreement that says that Massac County wishes to enter into a relationship with, uh, City Metropolis, Village Joppa, Brookport. And in that intergovernmental agreement, that'd be the abatement of the Massac County taxes, and City will sign the same. Well, Brookport and Village Joppa assess taxes on their own, but if it does, it grants Juanita the authority to do that. So what I had done was prepared a document, like I've done for all the other districts. Resolution to abate, and I filled in all the blanks. What we're looking for is just a motion to approve that. Um, I need an original signed copy, and then a couple of certified copies in order to put in our application to send off to the state. Has Patrick had a chance to review this? No, no, I guess not, no, he hasn't, this, uh, this is, uh, what we signed last time. And to, to give you guys an update, in two thousand fourteen, we did all of this. Our application was sent off for the enterprise zone, it was turned down because they told us we applied too early. I remember that. So we're going back and redoing it all again. No, he, he has not seen that document. When is your deadline for this? We're gonna turn this in by the end of the year, we gotta get this up there, it's the December thirty first, actually, that's on a Saturday. So December thirtieth is our actual, that's the last day to get it in. Can we have, can we have Patrick to look this up before we make a decision on it? Sure, take a look at it. I'm sure it's all good, but... Yeah, take a look at it. As, uh, as our legal advisor, we should always let him take a look at everything. We, uh, we've got a, uh, notice running in the paper this week, uh, by statute, we have to hire, we have to hold a public hearing for the enterprise zone to allow any sort of public comment on our application. Uh, later today, I'll be dropping off a map and a draft application at all the different applicants, uh, here at Juanita's office, City Hall, Village Joppa, City of Brookport. Uh, notice will run in the paper this week, I believe, and, um, I believe, let me check on that paper here. But the, um, hearing will be Thursday, October twentieth, at four thirty PM. We're gonna do it out at the community center, they got a little forum or map there. We figure that's as neutral a place as we could have of that. After we hold the public hearing, probably that following Tuesday, I'll bring the intergovernmental agreement about. Um, because that'll give the public a chance to speak. Anyone shows up or speaks or has a request, we'll be glad to entertain that. Uh, but if everything goes well, um, we will, I'll bring the intergovernmental agreement by probably that next week. So that gives you, what, until the twenty-fifth, I guess? You can let Patrick take a look at that, and I can pick everything up that day. Yeah, so we'll have a chance to look at that, and then that, the other agreement that you talked about. The intergovernmental agreement? I guess we can just get him a copy of that. Yeah, I'll bring, um, yeah, I'll, I'll be dropping that off. Hopefully, I think I have a copy of that, if not, I was, I should be getting one from our consultants, and I'll bring it by as soon as I get it. All right. You take a look at it. And I'll just, I'll make copies for Gerald and I and Jeff to read over, and I'll make that copy for Patrick. Uh, we can put it on the agenda for next week, or the week after, whatever's best for you. Whatever you guys are good with on this, I'm, the sooner the better, it's, I have a lot of data to track, so whatever, the sooner I can get them, that's good. We can just put it on the agenda for next week, if you like. Sure, sure, we'll do the resolution next week, and then in a couple of weeks, I'll bring by the... That way he has a chance to review it. I'm sure, like I said, ninety-nine percent chance everything's good, but it just gives him a chance to look at it. Sure, that'll work, that'll work. So, and it gives us a chance to read it for, it's hard to read it... Oh, I know, I know. In two minutes right in front of you here. Um, essentially what it is, is, uh, under the old, um, enterprise zone, there was a local incentive that was a five-year property tax abatement. If you did a project within the enterprise zone, it, it's not a hundred, it's a hundred percent abatement on the improvements that are made. So the taxes that you pay before the project, you continue to pay them. It's when you build or make improvements, and the assessed value goes up on that property, it's those improvements that are abated, so... It's encouraging people to spend more money on their, on their business and make it look better. Yeah, or, or what we see in town here, people will tear down an, an old structure, they'll build back a brand new building. So basically, they continue to pay taxes on the land, but they get a hundred percent abatement on the structure itself. Because they take away an old one, they build back a new one, and it works great, and it's five years. Um, there's some language in the abatement resolution when they sign that that says they're not supposed to contest, you know, before, during, and after. That, that kind of keeps it, you know, relatively fair. We do a really good job, Juanita and I do, of keeping the applicants informed as their abatement moves along, so they're not sticker shocked at the end. You know, we try to keep them informed that there's a year left, two years left. Like we all know, a lot of times this stuff doesn't show up till a year after the fact that the job is, is completed. So we try to keep them informed when the abatement starts, when the abatement ends. Uh, what we're doing in this one is still the same five year, a hundred percent. Uh, we are offering a two year after that at fifty percent. That way, it's not such a, like, cold turkey, you know, it's not going from a small amount to a larger amount. But it, it's a wonderful incentive to help a local business get off the ground, it saves them some money. What you guys get, and what, the question I get a lot of times is like, what's in it for us? Well, what's in it, it's a wonderful incentive, at the end of it, you get a brand new building, or a remodeled building, and you get taxes. You know, you get people bringing business to town, and this is a great incentive, wonderful local incentive, so... I'll see you guys next week? Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sheriff. Have any questions, give me a call. All right. Thanks. All right, see you guys. Thank you. What's up, sir?
Howdy.
You wanna come on up there?
How's it going, man?
All right.
Haven't seen you in a little while.
No, it's been a while, unfortunately.
How's the education?
Busy.
Busy, busy.
Anything else? Uh, this is the required quarterly report to be done in September, but between the trip to Chicago and, yeah, lunch for the state soup, and Springfield, and at everybody's county board meeting on Tuesdays, um, a few weeks.
Yeah?
Plus down to a parade.
Yeah, I heard you was in the parade, everybody to buy Cheryl, weren't you?
Yes. Chocolate was melting on my hands, yes.
It was hot there, buddy.
Yes, it was. And then I saw in the paper after the fact, uh, do you guys have a department head meeting, uh, meet with department heads last week?
Uh, yeah, we had a meeting last Tuesday night, uh, the countywide meeting.
Okay.
About the, uh, proposal on the tax.
Okay. Let me hit this report. Uh, this is two things, it's quarterly, but it's also, I've got the, the annual report for the July one to June thirtieth year in there, if we picked that up. Have to get first couple of pages, although I will note, um, got sworn in in July for my, uh, second, um, year of a two-year term as, uh, one of the three vice presidents for our statewide organization, which also is a little more gravel, but, um... And then this year we'll finish that, and then...
and then this year we'll finish that and rotate to somebody else, but that's representing the, um, two areas. And then basically it's out in Springfield. Last year, July to June, first year, was at four counties. I, I showed truancy first, which at that point was working with, uh, Mr. Haley, who has retired now, and with the state attorney's office. You see the process, at least we wound it down, and I.
Who's taking that position?
Uh, nobody yet.
Were you just gonna advertise?
I've advertised, I've asked around, I'm still looking, and really need to get somebody in there, it's part-time. But, um, hopefully that would make it a little more flexible.
Were you just advertising in the local paper, or how did you get?
In the local paper, I let both schools know.
What qualifications does a person need to have to have that job?
I'm really looking for somebody who has experience either on the law enforcement court system side, or the social work side. Educators, of course, would work well there, because they've also worked in the school, but, um, having a couple of those skills, because that's a lot of what you end up doing. Of course, the court side is, is, is working in the state attorney's office, but, um, has to at least know a little bit, because you're operating in a couple of different roles there.
And, and how does it work, would it usually work? Someone asked me about it, you know.
We had been looking, I think, we had figured at least three days a week. But it's even, I think, with Mr. Haley, we even set around five hundred hours, uh, a year. Uh, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, it's an I'm rep position, but, um, flexible, it's just gotta be available during, during the day, I know we had somebody who was interested, um, who had expressed interest. They already had a job in the daytime, and, and that's.
Comfort, yeah.
Had heard from, um, uh, even working teachers, problem is, I mean, that's when you could be available.
Yeah.
To either attend court, or to be following up, or to be out visiting, or those kind of things. Let me see, last year though, from thirty-one step one letters from the first referral, if they continue on, they go up to step two. So at least we narrowed it, uh, which is what we're gonna do, and encourage more to get to school. But with the point right now, I'm gonna have one of my other county, uh, people try to cover, just to get something going. It's been, i- it's been, yesterday, a few months, we had email issues this summer, and trying to find, uh, a network specialist to take care of that, finally got that hired, then, um, one of my secretaries, Inbetten, had a, uh, heart issue, health issue, they had her out for six weeks, so, um, my Franklin County truancy officer, uh, left. So, seemed like every time I think I've got everything in place, we're gonna have to find one more. Across our region, um, over four hundred educators registered, which would have just been new registration. So that's not the grand total in the region. Uh, background checks, in Massac County, we did two hundred thirty-three last year, um, from about August on. And that's a service we do here, three days a week. Uh, the G D testing is not including numbers from Chumming College, where people locally would be taking a test, but we, of course, still have all the records. You would think you would see enough bus driver, um, signs up that, um, we were filling all the spots, uh, we trained a hundred and fourteen drivers across the four counties, and still were looking for people. Plus another three hundred and one did a refresher training once a year, and we finally got our state money for that. Let's see here. Almost numbers seem to be below where I would think they might be. That's federal funds. There, um, we inspected every, uh, public station, we inspected every building in the region, which is over fifty. Uh, plus the various permits, um, for example, for the addition out here at, uh, Metropolis Elementary. And then they'd stay in contact with the district here after the storm came through. The Starquest Regional Safe School Program, which is what the s- the program we have here in town. We serve the county, and there are, have been some from, uh, Johnson County there, too. We had, uh, six as our final enrollment there, we were up as high as, um, as ten, and actually, uh, we serve fifteen kids down here, and that's, uh, one teacher and an aide, and ten computers, so that's really, out of the, amount of space we have, but, um, trying to get those kids educated, and, um, I'm sure you've seen even in the paper, um, with issues for some students who are having discipline issues in other places. That's who we end up with, uh, trying to work with. So that's kind of the summary there, um, and the staff we have through June thirtieth, um, the comings and the goings, still around, um, forty-three full and part-time, at various places. Then just since July, um, again, tru- thi- this is through the end of August, uh, these numbers are. And truancy wasn't up and running yet, but we had already, uh, conducted seventy-six background checks, just in July and August in Massac County. And had already had, uh, fifty-seven new bus drivers in initial trainings, and, uh, paid to have their yearly refreshers, and we've done more of those since that point in time. Enrolling into the year. And then staff there, again, on, on page fifteen. The, uh, situation after we got past July first, when the stopgap budget was passed for regional education. We are getting our state aid for, um, the schools we have, um, that go on Starquest. Things to deal with state grants, um, because the new accountability system, GADA, which was also with the feds. Uh, things have been slow to be approved, uh, we are still having some of our major grants approved, even in the last week. Um, including some of the ones where we cover the thirty-eight, thirty-nine counties in our area. Those are all reimbursement based, so we've kind of been limping and waiting here as we get into October, uh, to go forward with those. But we're holding it on right now, and watching what everybody else does as well, and trying to be cognizant as we're, we're, uh, making decisions. I will send down here later this week, kind of a, um, better accurate report, but running the numbers last night. Um, and trying to finish up. Last year, we had asked for a total of twenty-nine thousand eight eighty, which was split between about twenty-two thousand in salary. And another seventy-four hundred in benefits. This year, um, that looks like it'll drop. When I originally ran these, at least a hundred and fifty dollars, but actually will drop farther than that, because going back through, we have a couple that did not take insurance. So I've gotta take another eight thousand out of my total for the four counties, so. We're asking people to run a little bit, and then, of course, uh, we're doing what we can to help take care of the building we're into. And the morgues kept up well.
Good.
Haven't had the heat checked out yet. Seems like the leaking has stopped.
Yeah.
So.
It's a good thing.
A good thing, um, and then give for you, uh, in Franklin County, um, our building there, which is as old as this one. Sewer and basement issues are, um, Melton County's gonna have to leave everybody out, because we're in a, in a spot there. But they aren't running a sales tax option till the spring, so.
Does that, that sales tax still remodel to their core now?
Um, I think actually it's going to be to see if they can construct, construct something, uh, new that cover everything. That would be between our jail, it's about twenty-two years old, and, uh, State Attorney Justice Center, you know, detention center, there's space there. You've got an eighteen-seventy, eighteen-eighty courthouse, um, that had been remodeled. At some point in the seventies, actually, the second floor was cut in half, so it's now a three-floor courthouse, but, um, it has daily issues being an eighteen-eighty courthouse. And our building, uh, was an old hotel, and, um, was useful as it was, but it's getting to the point. Both as, as, as a workable space, and then, of course, that many, um, bathroom in every office. That'll submit, that many sewer lines, and, um, they've been collapsing and et cetera. And pouring into the basement, and all that fun stuff, so. Like I said, you, you're living through it, and you know, Johnson County, kinda living through the same thing right now, though at least their sales tax went through. That's correct. That's where we are, um, school's going, and staying in contact with, uh, Mr. Smith and everybody at Massac, uh, Unit One. And with, uh, Joffe Maple Road, and, um, um, those schools are meeting, um, requirements, and. Talk to him about it.
Yeah.
Glad you're by.
We appreciate what you're doing.
Anything you can do to help. Nice to be, uh, part of the community.
Ask what'll be starting soon, for you?
Pretty soon, we're down here Friday for football. I hope to spend the whole day down here Friday, and then we're supposed to meet with an assistant state soup in Springfield Friday for lunch, so. I'll be here eventually Friday.
Yeah.
But, uh, um, fifty-two thousand miles on the car. Fifty-two thousand miles on the car since last, uh, April first, so.
Wow.
This year?
Since last April first. I've had it a year and.
Oh.
Almost a half, so.
Still a lot of miles.
But I know where all kinds of things are that I didn't used to know. Unfortunately, when I identify roads in Massac County for things, I know where everything is now. Now, without, uh, without a compass, there's times, of course, out in the county, that you've gotta. But that's all good, too, I guess that's even in town sometimes.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
We'll see you in the next break.